Okay. Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 16th work session of the Methacton Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Earnshaw and Ms. Aubrey Larsones. Now, for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I turn it over to Dr. Serby.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Mangano, who will present the Academic Achievement Awards, the M-Awards. Traditionally represent excellence in education, and it is an achievement of a 93 average or greater in subjects last year. So we have a number of recipients that we'd like to pay tribute to for their hard work. We also want to make sure that we thank their parents and anyone else that has contributed to their child's success. With that said, this evening, when Dr. Mangano calls out your name, if you would be so kind to make your way to this side of the aisle, the far aisle to my right, I will greet you over here, and then you will come in front of the table and shake the hands of the members of the board, and then proceed out to gather for a picture of the entire class associated with the M-Award presentation. So with that said, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Mangano.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the school board for having me here tonight. Thank you to the audience and to the many parents and students and familiar faces I see. It's wonderful to see all of you. This is a very proud moment, I would say, as a representative of Arcola, because I get to come and speak about students who work very hard. All students work hard, but you've worked particularly hard, so we get to recognize you tonight. So I'm very proud and very honored to be here. And I'm going to say this, I'm going to do my very best to get everybody's name in the right way. If I'm wrong, feel free to tell me. I have no problem apologizing. Thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations to everyone. I'm going to begin with the 7th grade students. Again, if you could proceed that way and then head out that way. Michael Bakhtiar, Uma Babat, and if you could hold your applause till the end, I'm just going to announce all the names at once. Kirsten Buggel, Caroline Cherikos, Cameron Chilson, Haley Chung, Isabella Coppola, Shrinada Dandibhatla, Sharika Dandibhatla, Elise Dewan, Hayden DiPaola, Mohit Duda, Jack Filigrana, Eden Foltz, Christopher Graff, Jargi Harkari, Joe Horowitz, Evan Hostetler, Daniel Johnson, Sarah Kim, Sean Kim, Derry Lee, Alice Liang, Megan Leenen, Kendall McNally, Bipasha Moktan, Sophie Noller, Drew O'Brien, Shannon O'Leary, Samiksha Panda, Ayati Patel, John C. Patel, Kritsha Patel, Ariman Panchi, Michael Reber, Abigail Rieger, Julia Reed, Anna Rosinski, Stephanie Schmidt, Kate Schwanhold, Avery Schwartz, Anya Shiravatsva, Juliana Cipia, Jackson Smith, Mary Smith, Kate Stone, Shriekna Tumal Reddy, Amanda Sai, Nicole Ubeli, Matthew Apani, Lucy Wang, Nicholas Willen, Jack Winters, Michelle Tsai, Andrew Zhang. Those are our 7th grade students. And now our 8th grade's award winners. Irene Bijou, Bonnie. Thank you, 7th grade parents. I'm working on mine, as you can see. No, I have 8. Irene Bijou, Bonnie Chapman, Nathan Choi, Braden Churches, Caitlin Clark, Mackenzie Oh, jeez. Whoops. Clark, Nathan Courtney, Olivia Davidson, Giancarlo DeFilippis, Amber DeMichelle, Aditi Okay. Ducla, Hannah Foltz, Iris Gong, Rachel Gordon, Haley Grau, Matthew Haas, Jordan Henry, Julia Horowitz, Melinda Jin, Joseph Caminitz, Michael Kasparkova, Madeline Kenny, Sarah Kenwood, Joseph Kiernan, Sarah Kim, Tyler Kim, Karina Kumar, McKenna Comfort, Sophia Lieber, Junie Lee, Sarah Legnola, Angela Leon, Michael Lee, Celia Long, Aiden Mann, Allison Maskantonio, Ryan Matour, Nolan McCluskey, Grace Montoya, Ruby Murray, Rhea Nyack, Parry Nav, Madison No, William Orcut, Teresa Otto, Prina Padman Bahan, Natalie Parentes, Tricia Patel, Dylan Fawn, Grace Pacozzi, Benjamin Reich, Stephen Ramish, Maria Rosinski, Anubhav Sen, Madeline Schaefer, Michaela Sheedy, Reagan Scudularic, Holly Splezer, Quinton Stemler, Matthew Tang, Hannah Taylor, Abigail Thornton, Nicole Timko, Everett Weaver, Lily Welsh, Michael Willen, Michael Wimmer, Madeline Yorgi, Stephanie Yu, Amy Zhang, and Austin Zhang. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, Dr. Katona will be presenting the Comprehensive Plan. As we usually do, we'll ask the board if they would please take seats in the front row as Dr. Katona gets set up to share her presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, the certificates are out there. They're out there. They'll be given. Comprehensive Plan, which is due to the state at the end of November and will cover from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th of 2020. I originally shared this with the Education Committee at the beginning of this month. They provided some feedback, which I have made a few adjustments based on that feedback. And so what I show you this evening and what will get posted reflects that. So just very briefly, these are the sections that we worked through to complete the Comprehensive Plan, Brief District Profile, a section on Core Foundations, which included those four areas. There is a section on Safe and Supportive Schools, Materials and Resources, Professional Education, and then there is a Needs Assessment, where we identify our accomplishments as well as our concerns, and then a District Level Plan, where the plan itself that PDE has us completing generates some information based on the concerns that we noted. So in terms of our district profile, first of all, we provide an explanation of our planning process that we did prior to the November 30th submission. So as you can see, our planning process included information gathered through the Strategic Planning Process, which we did a couple years ago. At that time, we had about 100 people who had provided input to that plan, and so there were certain components that came out of that, in particular for the first focus area that we were then able to transfer into this plan. We also gathered input from the Curriculum Council members. There are 30 teachers that serve, approximately 30 teachers that serve on the Curriculum Council from across grades K through 12 in a variety of subject areas. And both at the end of last spring and the beginning of this fall, we went through and solicited input from them on the different areas, especially related to standards, curriculum, material, and resources, et cetera. We also gathered information at the end of last spring from the Act 48 Committee members. Mrs. Ricky solicited their input in order to include some of that into the professional education portion. Again, we then presented this to the Education Committee this month, received input from those committee members, and we will end up posting it for 28 days following next Tuesday's meeting for community feedback. If at that time, there are any adjustments to be made, we will make those, and then we will get it submitted to PDE. We updated the mission, vision, and shared values, again, based on what had come out of our strategic planning. And we also, within the district profile, provided information on our educational community and noted, in particular, some highlights since the previous plan. So for example, there was a growth in the percentage of professional staff with advanced degrees, including an additional 6% with masters and 1% with doctorates. Previously, we had 69% with masters. We now have 75%, and we had none with doctorates. So we now have 1% of our staff with doctorate. Our four- and five-year cohort graduation rates are 96% and 97%, respectively. That hasn't changed much from the previous plan, if at all. Growth in participation in athletics increased from 13% to 37%, and in our music programs from 10% to 18% across grades 7 through 12. And 96% of our 2018 graduates continued their education in a two- or four-year college or university, and that percentage is 8% higher than it was when we submitted our previous So the section on Core Foundations, in here, we go through, and a lot of this is generated by PDE in terms of a pull-down menu of options or radio dials that we need to fill in. And so we have to fill in information regarding standards for every subject content area and what we've done across there in terms of mapping and alignment. And just for, as a matter of your information, when we talk about mapping, we're talking about considering when, how, and what is taught, as well as the assessment measure used to demonstrate student achievement and learning outcomes. And alignment is where we consider if the curriculum is aligned with perhaps state standards or local lesson plans, assignments, textbooks, instruction, et cetera. We could identify each of these as being nonexistent, needs improvement, developing or accomplished. And we were pleased, we were very pleased to see that there was an increase of about 25% of applicable standards areas that are now developing or accomplished, whereas previously they were either nonexistent needs improvement or developing and moved into accomplished. And with alignment, there was a 31% increase. We definitely saw a huge growth among those that were nonexistent or in need of improvement when we were starting. Developing is kind of a very broad term, because back in 2014, we could have been at the very beginning of developing something, and now we may be, you know, closer to accomplishing, but we may not have said that we have absolutely accomplished it at this point. In terms of instruction, or I'm sorry, in terms of curriculum, we've also made a great deal of improvement, especially in the development relative to connecting with PA Core and other updated standards. In fact, this aspect of the curriculum moved from developing to accomplished. In terms of instruction, we are asked about areas such as structured grouping, flexible instructional time, differentiated instruction, and we look at whether this is used not at all, whether it's used in less than 50% of our classrooms, more than 50% of our classrooms, or if there's full implementation. And in terms of the items under instruction, most of them were identified as being present in more than 50% of the classrooms. However, we did realize that, again, with our ongoing changing needs of our students, we also need to continue doing work with differentiating to ensure the strategies are aligned with those students' needs, and that came out actually as a concern to focus on. And then assessments. So in terms of assessments, we looked again across all grade spans, and we looked at items such as whether there are works of art or musical, theatrical, or dance performance. That would be one of the areas. Teacher-developed assessments is an area, national assessments, diagnostic, portfolio of student work, and then other measures that could be presentations, could be standardized tests, could be a number of things. So we looked at all of these assessments and whether we have these different types across the board. And what we found was, we do have a variety that are available for classroom use, including summative informative assessments. We did find that our portfolio assessment use is limited, and that that might be something that we could perhaps look at how that could work its way into some different areas. Under Safe and Supportive Schools, we recognize that we have a number of program strategies and actions related to these areas, ongoing review of and revision to curriculum, analyzing assessment data to inform instruction, providing meaningful professional development, and focusing on the whole child. And again, all of these are in order to obviously support our students, both academically, you know, as well as with other needs that they might have around that whole child. We also provided information, Dr. Engstead gave a bit of information on how we support students at all academic levels, including those who are gifted through the appropriate screening, evaluating, and programming. And we made special note, again, of an improvement since our previous submission, which is the implementation of the COGAT assessment that we now give our students for gifted screening. Programming includes the list of items that you see there. Just a couple notes here, developmental services, that might include things such as counseling or health screening, any bullying prevention, consultation and coordinating services. We have, we offer alternative education as needed. Our home and school visitor is critical here. So there are a number of items under each of these that we went through and identified how we go about delivering these across the district. In terms of our materials and resources, we have made significant progress with updating materials and resources for appropriate alignment to academic standards and accessibility. Our teachers on assignment that we've had over the past few years and that we continue with right now have served and continue to serve as valuable resources for supporting teachers, whether it's securing materials for them, helping them understand delivery of certain concepts, whatever that might be, helping them work through, understanding their assessments and what that means for their students. Working with the Lincoln system, which we're currently looking at this year, and we have had both administrators and teachers, a certain number of teachers, get some training on so that they could see the way that we could easily, more easily, collect data perhaps and allow for teachers then to have their instruction informed more easily. PDE's SAS site, the Standards Line Systems, we use that whenever we are writing curriculum. And there's also something called the Early Warning System, which is a free Pennsylvania educator dashboard system and intervention catalog, and it looks at metrics such as attendance, behavior, and courses to identify students who may be on the path to dropping out of school. So when we got to this one, we had an option to indicate if we were interested in learning more about this, and we said, yes, we are. So once this is submitted, we should be getting more information on that. Professional education. Opportunities for professional education include time for small groups of teachers to collaborate. This could be through planning time, it could be through created opportunities that we have for them during the school day, when we pull them together for specific purposes, could be through in-service at times, it could be certainly through their MIAC hours. We also provide experts in the field of inclusive practices and co-teaching methods, which we've come to use more of over the past few years. We allow for attendance at applicable conferences and workshops, and then the teachers will come back and do, usually do some type of turnaround training, whether that's in their own school or if it's at an in-service. And we have opportunities for our administrators also, PILLS trainings, which are the Pennsylvania Inspired Leadership, and other applicable workshops. Mrs. Ricky runs our induction program and mentoring, and that continues to provide needed support for new teachers. And an area that we have recognized, based on a needs assessment, as focus is assisting with skills needed to analyze data for instructional decision-making. And so we will be looking at that. So when we considered all of the information and pulled it all together, and based on the feedback, we looked at what are our accomplishments across the district, and we found that there were certain items that really jumped out. And the first thing was really this strong sense of pride in the Methacton community, which we can see through, you know, support from the Education Foundation. We can see through the way that our students and staff embrace opportunities to do fundraising, our home and school support. Just when we were going through the strategic plan, all the people that assisted with that and that are just willing and ready to come out and help us, however, we can use their assistance. The development of the supervisor for professional learning and continuous improvement position, this has been very important, both for optimal planning for professional development and also for looking more thoroughly at data and communicating that out with our staff. Curricular alignment with the PA Core. I think it had just barely begun when I came in, and we have been able, over the past several years, to really do better with our alignment in that way. The institution of the one-to-one Chromebooks across grades 7 through 12. We work with those. I go out and visit schools, and in any of those grade levels, it's very rare if I don't see them being, the Chromebooks being used in some way for instruction. Our high school was ranked 27th in the state of Pennsylvania through, I believe it was U.S. News and World Reports. Our priority of K-12 career readiness, which is becoming more and more important, and of course, that is evident through the institution of the K-12 Career Counselor. We continue with a focus on STEM programming. We are making more progress toward that. One of the most recent actions we've taken is a partnership with Wilkes University for STEM endorsement. Our backpack program, through which we support economically disadvantaged students, and we do maintain levels of achievement above the state average on our state tests. The concerns that emerged out of this, again, going through different questions that were asked, and if you answered a no to any of the questions within certain categories that came out as a concern. And so three main areas emerged, and they are to identify and implement best practices to grow all students in their learning. We try to do this on a regular basis, obviously, but we have to be even more cognizant of the growing differences and needs of our students and adjust accordingly. So we have more work to do with that. Developing consistent protocols for data review to address specific student needs, again, with the second part. again with the second part of the continuous improvement part of Mrs. Ruckey's job, this becomes more of a focus for us. And then improving strategies for differentiating instruction to meet students' changing needs. So all of these are connected, but they come out just a little bit different across the board as concerns. So then, within the district level plan that's then generated, we will be looking to establish a district system to fully ensure consistent implementation of standards-aligned curricula across all schools for all students. We'll use our curriculum mapping and review in order to do that. We will also look to ensure staff members in every school use standards-aligned assessments to monitor student achievement and adjust instructional practices. Again, through support of our TOAs, supportive personnel from MCIU, those are the closest people that we have to really support that. The use of Linkit and the data that we get from that to determine alignment and provide insight to areas of need, and to continue professional development related to differentiating And then our timeline for submission. Next week, we will officially look for your approval for posting the plan for community review, beginning on October 24th. That will be posted for 28 days. And then, if we need to make any adjustments to the plan based on that feedback, we will. Dr. Zerby and our board president will sign the document, and then we will submit it to PDE by November 30th. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kritona. If the members of the board want to return to their seats. [inaudible]
need to get permission from the board to post it for 30 days, but we do, I think as part of the timeline, it'll just be a notice on our agenda. But with that said, are there any other questions from members of the board for Dr. Kritona?
Not, well, one question, one comment, just thank you. And I missed the presentation at the Education Committee, so I was happy to see it tonight. My comment first is sometimes I look at all those accomplishments in the last four years, and it's pretty awesome. So thank you for your part in that, and everybody's part in that. And just curious, if the REACH program is part of that comprehensive plan anywhere, or that's not something that we really need to put in it?
The comprehensive plan will be, it will be a live document, so that if at some point over the next year or so, we feel that that is something that we want to go back and put in as an accomplishment, or put that in under our support services, or something along those lines, we can certainly do that. And just to note also, if you recall back in May, the Special Education Plan was submitted, so when this goes in, then it will, you know, be a completion of everything.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Ryan?
Just one question. Thank you very much for the presentation, very informative. On the slide for professional education, the third bullet point there, area for focus is assisting with skills needed to analyze data for instructional decision-making. Could you just give a little bit more detail around what's meant by that and how you think you can tackle that as an area for focus moving forward?
So one of the things, one of the reasons, or one of the ways in which we've kind of maybe not been where we need to be is because of a lack of a real central spot for data, I think, for our teachers, just to very easily be able to look and say, okay, this makes sense. We know that every year, we, you know, we get our state data and so forth, but nobody ever wants to see that as the be-all and end-all. And so while we're giving assessments and, you know, making note of how our students do and so forth, we're really looking to help teachers make sense of, what does it mean then, and how do we pull that all together? When we look at, okay, if a student is here in one test, and here in another test, what does that mean? Are there certain skills that are common across? Is there something else that we can bring to them, so that they can then make decisions about what they need to be instructing, or how they need to be instructing it? And so those are really the things, and we're looking at, you know, how we might get a better system in place to do that. So I think having something like that, first of all, will be very helpful, so that teachers just have an easier way of identifying where it is the students may be lacking. But then, also, helping teachers understand what that looks like then, that it isn't something that means, okay, well, now you make, you know, it isn't about making like an individual plan for all the students, it's about where are the strengths and weaknesses in this class, and how do I help move up the strengths, and how do I help, you know, speak to the weaknesses and get them to where they need to be? So it's really going to come through, I would say, getting a good system in place for showing that data to the teachers, as well as then providing whatever the professional development is that would be needed for them to understand how they then use that and that translates into their lessons.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on this side? Mr. Navrat?
I guess on the next slide there, same thing on page four, needs assessment under concerns. Identify and implement best practices to grow all students in their learning. It's kind of broad. What, like, I guess, what are you, what are you most concerned about there in that area? And what, I guess, can you boil that down a little further? I mean, do you understand my question?
Yes, I think, again, and I think it emerges as a, first of all, let me just say that this emerges as a concern, not because we don't have best practices happening. It emerges as a concern because when you fill out the form from PDE, there is a question, you know, that ends with "across all classrooms, K to 12." And it's very difficult to say, you know, completely that every single person is using best practices all day, and, you know, so that's why that comes out as a concern. But that would be something like what we've begun, you know, even if you look at the elementary level, over the past couple of years, with redoing our math and our ELA curriculum, and bringing in different resources to use some different approaches, so that we are looking at skills, for example, and we're looking at using different modes of instruction, so that, you know, in math, for example, where they're using more manipulatives, you know, to get started, to give kids that concrete. So it isn't just, you know, like a worksheet and do this, and then, you know, hand it in. So I think when we're talking about, you know, best practices, when we look at our use of one-to-one, you know, are we using them to help students learn those skills that they need, such as collaboration and problem-solving? You know, or are we, you know, just putting a, you know, a worksheet on the computer for them to learn? So those types of things, and those would be some of the best practices that we're looking for.
Is there, is there anything specific that came at us, not just for that question, but overall, that jumped out at you? I mean, because this is kind of a, it's a kind of a different way to assess the entirety of our program, right? And I guess when you're doing these, you know, push-button, push-thething, and then you've got an automated response, I mean, is there anything that came out to you, like, yeah, you know what, we really should do a better job there?
I think, I think that what you see in the concerns here really, and as I said, I think they're all connected. I think the idea of using data to inform instruction, and then differentiating that instruction appropriately, is really the biggest thing.
Any other questions on this side? If not, do we have questions down here? All right. Dr. Kritona, thank you so much for the presentation. So we'll have this on the agenda as an information item, and then it'll get posted. We will likely, if we could, we work with the last final days with Ms. Lynch to get this all posted, and we'll take care of that.
I already have an email to her.
Okay, great. That ends the presentations for this evening. On the agenda, as you'll see, and just added today, there was a third one for next week. We've been asked by the Shenandoah Resident Foundation to do a check presentation. If you recall, they donated some resources to help support a new initiative this past summer in bringing a summer library program to the Math Acton School District. So they asked if they could come and present as well. And of course, the Math Acton Education Foundation will be presenting on the, giving a donation for the Backpack Program. So we appreciate that, and we have some excellent staff recognition. We just held some meetings with staff today and students, and we tweeted that information out. So we look forward to sharing them with you next week. We'll go on to reports then, next week, and then we'll have an opportunity for a public comment on action items. We'll ask the board to review and to pass the board minutes, and then we'll go on to fiscal items. And I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Bricker for any questions on fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
For this board meeting, we have the list of bills, treasurer's report, budgetary transfers. There's two parent transportation contracts at the IRS reimbursement rate, which is currently at 54 and a half cents per mile. Resolution 18-06, which is a technology reimbursement of purchases leased, and Transportation Addendum Number Two, which modifies the regular school busing rate to a flat rate of $270 per day, per route.
So if we could, are there any questions from members of the board on listed bills, treasurer's report, or budgetary transfers? Okay. With that said, parent contracts, they're pretty straightforward. We ask parents from time to time, or they ask and request in specific situations, and we work through that if there are no other alternative options. So those are typical, we've done those in the past. So the technology lease, if you could explain that to members of the board, that many of them, this is probably the first time they've seen this.
So what the resolution is, it allows the school district to purchase and acquire technology-related items, and then, given around May, we enter into a leaseback where they'll refund us the money that we purchased, and we'll lease them over a four-year period with payments starting the following year on that. This is done mainly because a lot of the items that we're acquiring require disposal, and it would be costly for the school to dispose of items once they outlive their usefulness. They're typically $1 buyouts, and if we really want any of those items, we could buy them back for a dollar, but for the most part, almost everything goes back. There's some bigger technology items that they may want to keep, they have a longer life, but for the most part, you're looking at like the Chromebooks and items like that.
Any questions from the board on the technology lease? Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Couple of questions. Actually, one's a correction, I think, on page three, I think the dates need to be updated for 2018. It looks like it's okay in pages one and two, but I think page three references 2017. In terms of, I think I've asked this question since I've been on the board here, is this truly the best way to go about our technology acquisitions, especially with the million-dollar blanket that we have here? This has been one thing that I've kind of asked for in the past, is a breakdown of, you know, what our technology looks like now, what's planned to be done over the next year. A million dollars is kind of a, just here, you can spend up to a million dollars on technology. I was wondering, you know, what's the oversight there? What's the plan behind that?
So part of the technology budget that's submitted, as sure by Dr. Sosnovik, includes all the different items that they're going to be purchasing, when the Chromebooks expire, which ones they'll have to replace, and what the estimated cost will be. There is actually a very massive spreadsheet that is used to map out when certain items are required.
And is that just for repeat things from year to year, or what about new spending on technology? Could that?
Sorry. Say that again?
What about, so it seems like a lot of that stuff would be yearly things, meaning it's, you know, what has to be replaced? What about new spending in technology? Could that be put in under the million dollars? And how does that get vetted out? You know, what really needs to be spent on technology this year versus next year? Or does it need to be done at all?
That is done, and then some of the items include, or like the phone systems was looked at for this year with an acquisition, potentially upgrading, creating our phone systems. There's a whole, it's not just the technology items that you're looking at, the Chromebooks and computers and laptops and items like that. It's the servers, it's the switches, it's everything. It's a very comprehensive list of what's coming in. And while it's spend up to a million dollars, the real thing is, what we're working on doing is managing the lease payments. It's very, we could spend a million dollars, and it could cost us nothing to spread it out over four years. Our leases are typically 1% right now, so the cost is not that much, we're just spreading out. We're looking to try and keep the spending on the leases roughly around $700,000.
I think, if I could just add the part of your question, I think what's important is, in speaking with Vice President and President, one of the things that I wanted to bring forward this year is a more, is a deeper dive into the whole technology planning process as we unfold. So I think part of, you know, this lease buying and the items and all that, and what the future holds, at least having a good three-year plan to kind of, you know, guide the board with what we're doing, and then maybe that will better answer the question, you know, is that the best way to buy those things if you're planning for them in three years? You know, one of the challenges with leases, certainly there's, obviously, there's an expense to the lease, but what the lease program was originally designed to do, and this was, this occurred, you know, before, before any of us were on the board or in the administration, but it was designed to, you know, provide an opportunity where the budget wouldn't, you know, get those, you know, traditional slashes. So in typical practice in years past, if you wouldn't have a lease program similar to this, it would be a budget line item, and the budget line item would always be under a challenge. And then what would happen is, it would put districts in unusual situations where one year or for a period of time, they'd be doing real well with, you know, using technology to provide instructional assistance, and providing technology for staff and students, and then due to budgetary matters and the ability to slash the budget, things would happen with boards. I'm not saying here, but I'm saying that traditionally, what it did is, it put a, it put a steady target of funding in the budget, because we knew that in every year, we're not paying for today's technology, we're actually paying for the technology that, you know, we got a year or possibly four years ago. And that's how, that's how that works, in simplistic form. But I think what's important here is that we do what I said we will do, is, and Dr. Sosnovik is working with me to put that plan together, and he'll deliver that as a means to educate the board on a more comprehensive role that technology has in the district, and how our spending is, and look deeper into how that, how the leases work, and how other expenditures, you know, are taken care of. So I hope that'll be helpful.
Great, thank you very much. I think that would be very helpful for the board. Last question, what is kind of a nuanced thing. Did I hear that we're going to change slightly how this is in the budget, in terms of where it's been located? And this has been, since I've been on the board, one of the hardest things, and as new board members come on and trying to understand exactly how that was listed and why it would be moved. Are we changing that?
This was changed last year. This is just a spending cap that can be used to acquire technology that would go on the lease. Ultimately, what's going to drive it is what the lease payments are. And talking with Dr. Zerby, when we went over this last year, our goal is to try and keep the lease payments right around $700,000. And as $200,000 comes off, we can put $200,000 back on. Don't have to, but that would be right where we're trying to do, that will control our spending costs. Just because it says a million-dollar technology reimbursement, last year, I think we spent $680-some thousand. So it's not, it's just a room to say this is how much we could spend up to, and it stops us from overspending. But again, my goal is to watch the lease payments to come out of that over four years, and as items burn off, I want to have them come off permanently.
Thank you.
Questions on the leasing, the technology leasing item? If not, we'll go on to the transportation contract. This, while you explained this with finance, and you probably explained this... While you explained this with finance and you probably explained this with the Property and Transportation Committee, just in summary, what does this reflect?
So the addendum has two things. One, it addresses the spending that is on the regular school route. This is going to be now, instead of having it be based on the size of the bus, the first four hours, and then every hour thereafter, it's now setting a flat rate of $270 per route that will be per day. This allows us to manage, by managing the routes and having the days, we can manage our budget and expenditures associated with that. And it's better from a planning point of view as well as a monitoring and validation of the work that's being done by First Student. Very simple, let's sit there and say you've ran 20 buses today, we give you 20 times $270. Also on top of that, we are formally documenting the process that we use for the extracurricular and the field trips, which we've been doing in practice, but it's not written anywhere in any of the contracts. So we're making sure that's now documented until there's no questions associated with that in the addendum.
Any questions for members of the board?
Are the field trips then also 270?
No.
It's going to be a different, because you have to go, you have extra time sometimes.
The 270 is just a regular school route. So that does not include jump start, that does not include the extended school year. There's an hourly rate for field trips, there's an hourly rate for the extracurricular that's in the contract. We're not changing any of that information. What we're doing with the extracurricular and the field trips is we're documenting how it's done. There's nothing documented in how the billing is actually done in the contract at this point in time.
Any other questions on the transportation addendum? Anything down here? Mr. Neva?
Yeah, I guess more comments than anything. I know we talked about this in property, we talked about it in finance. This mic's volumed up today. I'm going to have to be quiet. I do think this is good. I know how much time that you and your staff have spent on billing and going back and forth with First Student to make sure we are only billed for the hours that buses have been on the roads and I appreciate that and making sure that every I is dotted and every T is crossed. So I'm glad. I know you gave us a bunch of information about comparative districts. I appreciate that, the analysis you did. I do want to make sure though, that when we, let's come back and look at this then at the end of the year, is there going to be something in this addendum? I know one of the things we talked about in transportation was have, you know, putting a yearly review on this. Is there going to be something along those lines as part of this?
Every year, we have the right going forward to cancel the transportation agreement with First Student and/or look to modify that.
Well, we have the right to cancel, but modifying is something different, right? Because then you're going to-
We'd have to discuss that with them. But no, there's nothing to reopen the pricing. The pricing's pretty much set at the 1.7% annual increase on those.
Right. And that's a lower rate than we had the first couple of years of the deal as well, so.
The first five years was at two and a half, the second five years is at 1.7% annual increases. That's documented in the addendum. I can't see why they would want to open it up.
I'm okay, I'm comfortable with it, Tim. I just want to make sure that when we come back at the end of the year and we, let's just look at, I mean, we'll bring it up in committee. I already got it in my notes, so when we get to the summertime, we look at it. But let's just come back and look and revisit and make sure that the number still makes sense and it's the right number, so.
Well, I guess with your point and the discussion here, I mean, if you're thinking that, you know, a modification, you want to, the district needed to leave the door open for a modification if this new plan does not produce its intended results. I don't think it has, we don't, the contract doesn't give us that ability to do that right now. So are you suggesting that we should have that fail proof in there to allow for a period of time? I just want to be clear-
Based on the numbers that I've seen so far, I'm comfortable with this and I don't, unless somebody here strongly feels that we need it, I'm okay leaving it out. I just want to know if it was in there because we had brought it up at one point in the property.
We did bring it up, but, and I believe it's not in there, so, you know, I just wanted to clarify. So, you know, we believe this is the best path and it is similar to the path that most other districts are using. And, you know, one of the things, you know, not doing it this way in the first couple of years, and especially with Tim being new to not only school and school transportation, but he does know this thing inside out and he's pretty, you know, he's pretty confident in knowing that we're landed on the right number. So if there aren't any other questions on that, I'll, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any impact with the private and parochial schools then? Is the, are they going to just be billed, billing exactly the same for the?
But we don't build the schools themselves, but the transportation builds us for those routes. It's a regular school route.
That is a regular school route, even the distance that they're going or whatever, it's, that is considered to be a regular school route and falls under this.
Because we're required to bus to all schools within the 10-mile from the boundaries, yes. It is a regular school day.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just, it's not on this, I just, one thing before we get off of fiscal here. The audit that was presented during the finance committee meeting, I believe in the past it's been presented to the board to approve and make finalized, so it's not sitting in draft form. Are we planning on doing that for next week?
There was an agenda item on the finance committee called the audit, but it was a statement to say that the audit is in draft format. It was shared with Mr. Bricker and his staff. It is actually due to be completed by the end of October and it will be on the agenda for finance committee. The entire auditing team will be there for finance to meet with the finance committee and then it will come to the board in November. So you're absolutely right, but we didn't, it wasn't presented because we just received the draft.
So the timeline in the R P that we agreed to is that it would be completed by October 31st, which they are absolutely going to make.
That's just not in terms of making our meeting, so there you're going to go to the wire.
No, because they did submit it to us, we have reviewed it, we had some comments back. There's some information we're updating for them on that and then it'll be presented as a complete document then.
Okay. One thing that goes along with that, I guess, is when it gets to the full board level, I might ask that not only is there a review of the actual audit, but maybe a review of the financials as it compares to actuals versus budget? I know a lot of times the audit is just making sure, you know, what we spend, is spent in the right category and things of that nature, but I would like a review of actual versus budgeted if possible. Thank you.
Are there any other questions under finance? Please, please be aware that it's my understanding from a conversation this week with the construction team, Fedevia and Mr. Fretz and others, that we are still on schedule with the Alcola project. We did present in the Property and Finance, or Property and Transportation Committee meeting that there may be vendors, engineers, that would, that would, that, the team's going through the process of evaluating and soliciting and evaluating engineers. At this point, I don't think we'll have any recommendations for next week, but we did tell the Property and Transportation Committee that we didn't have them for the committee. We will not have them for the work session. There's a possibility that they'll be available for the voting meeting, but at this point in time, it doesn't look, doesn't look promising. So that will mean that it won't be until November that some of those engineers and other consultants will be approved through the normal process. With that said, going on to personnel items, Mr. Regina?
Good evening. Number of items for the board's consideration this evening. The first one is the unfortunate item that's listed first, the resignation of Angela Lynch. Ms. Lynch is moving on to greener pastures, potentially, but closer pastures, and we wish her luck. She's been, I know one of the first things when I came into cabinet, she was the one that's been in cabinet the longest. I was the newest, so we're kind of looking at each other like, okay, Angela, I need some training here. So I know I'm rambling, but I'm very sad to see her go, so Angela, thank you.
He's not. He's now sitting in your seat. But with the simple fact that Ms. Lynch will, her last day will be the 19th, assuming that the board next week will approve it, if she'd be so kind, if you want to come down and shake the hands of the board members, you're welcome to do that.
Shake mine first, shake mine first. I was embarrassed enough already. And I can't shake your hands, but I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. Thanks for all of your, thanks for helping. Thank you. Thanks for everything. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Now Angela's been a tremendous asset to the organizations for, I think- Been a tremendous asset to the organization for, what, 15 years?
Almost 15.
Okay, and, you know-
I thought I looked so young.
You do. Child.
So yes, you know, while this is unfortunate for the district, you know, this is a great opportunity for her as an individual, as a professional, and we wish her the best of luck. And just to know, we, you know, Mr. Regina has gone out and we are advertising for the position and there'll be a process and we'll communicate that process to the board as it unfolds. But, you know, thank you for your service to the district and I know I won't be, I won't be here to see your last day. So I figured if, you know, I could at least embarrass you a little bit by making you come up and shake hands, but thank you so much for everything you've done for the district and for this community.
Thank you very much. It's been my sincere pleasure.
Mr. Regina?
Moving on, we have a resignation for classified staff. We have one item for the establishment of a professional position. That's a .5 position in the English language development area. We have one item for employment of professional staff. We have two items for employment of classified staff. We have one item for employment for long-term substitutes. We have three items for uncompensated leave for professional. Three items for uncompensated leave for classified. Three items for supplemental contracts. One item for volunteers. One item for community education and one item under job descriptions.
Well, I imagine there might be some questions. One is probably on the E S L, so if you could just explain to the board why that's there and why we have a blank in the spot and where we're at at this point.
So the E L D position is based on need in the district and right now we are evaluating the staff and where our E L D numbers are the greatest in order to properly staff that position. So right now, we're looking at some of those numbers with Dr. Angstead. We know we need it, but we want to make sure that we can utilize our staff appropriately before we make that decision.
And I'll just follow up. I know we've talked at education about the numbers and that they need it to complete testing, so I would imagine now, other than new children, all the testing has been completed and now we know who needs the services and this is why this position has come forward. Okay.
There's just some logistics that we need to work out in order to fill in the location, but generally speaking, you know, and on an annual basis, we've moved this staff around to fit the need of the district. So it's not like these positions are just married to a particular building. Is on personnel items?
Yeah, just one on the E L D. Are our numbers this year bigger than they've been in the past in that area?
Wish Dr. Angstead was here to answer that question.
I do have the numbers though in my, in my, from special, from education committee.
Great.
So the numbers, I know that she said that we, she said as of 9:30, we had 176 E L D students, 59 at Woodland, 12 were incoming kindergarten, which was an increase. There were 144 students active with direct instruction, 32 students being on consult monitored. And that means going from two-year to a four. So, but she had said overall that there was a increase of 50 students, over 50 students from previous years.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Other questions on personnel items to my right? Anyone?
I didn't want to bring it up when we were saying thank you to Angela and all those wonderful things, but sincerely, thank you. But I just, and I know you'll share with the board the process for filling this position, but I don't know if people realize how unique, you know, being here 15 years, being a cabinet member, not all district's communications person is a cabinet member, but for example, on this, on your section alone, between the right-to-know officer later, between the community education aquatic director, like Ms. Lynch has her hands in a lot of, in a lot of different pots that I don't think people realize. So, you know, I see a job description here for the technology specialist. I'm wondering if we have worked on this job description as part of the process. And I'm sure you have, but like this is-
The board has it as well. So if you remember, almost a year ago, all the director and cabinet-level job descriptions were updated and you approved those. And one of the things that we do is, on an annual basis, we create an administrative key that is, it's a grid that displays the responsibilities associated with each cabinet-level position on a high level. So, and then obviously the job descriptions, you know, provide additional detail. But, you know, the unfortunate part, we had to go through this process and the fortunate part is we just recently went through the process of clarifying some roles and responsibilities. So, you know, we're at a good spot. You know, we have divvied out some of the tasks in a temporary basis. Some are, have to be more official than others, but we believe that we have just about everything covered. I know there's some, you know, final details that still need to be worked out with a couple of matters, but, you know, we think we have as much covered as need be to keep the operation moving effectively until replacement is found.
She's not changing her phone number, is she?
And I ask more because, you know, we all know how much Angela does at the table, but I don't realize, like, what concerns me is all that community, all those community things that go on. Like, I know Ms. Kiefer's there, but, I mean, all the logistics with the facilities, like-
Trust me, there's nobody that knows more about what she does than I do. And when, with that said, I mean, it is, it is a huge loss to my office and she's been a great asset to my new secretary as well. So, you know, there's, it's a tremendous hole to fill. And, you know, while I'd like to make her feel sad and envious of maybe coming back and if that's what we're trying to do here, I'm all for it. But the truth be told, you know, I also, you know, know that, you know, she made a decision and I think it's a good decision and we're going to, we're going to let her go forward if the board's-
And I'm not saying I'm not going to approve it. I just, I can just imagine the phone calls we get that, I'm just saying, this process is very important because not easy shoes to fill is what I, is what I was saying.
That's personal.
If I can just say that I'm blessed by what you're saying, but I'm also been honored to work in a district where all the superintendents I've worked for, including Dr. Zerbi, have had a deep understanding and value, as you say, the position is not always this much responsibility and this much leadership is not applied to the position in all districts and all districts even have it. So thank you to the board for placing that value on communication. It is very important and I appreciate you are all of course and all the superintendents have had a deep understanding of that. And so Dr. Zerbi understands inside and out as does his cabinet and they are, they're supportive of the role and posted it immediately and I'm confident that you'll find someone and he will choose someone that will do just as much value, bring just as much value to the position and the district advise.
Any other questions on matters of personnel? On this side? How about on this side? Nothing? Okay. So with that said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, I believe it's curriculum and programs. Yes, Dr. Grotona?
Okay. And this is the item to authorize the administration to place comprehensive plan on public display. That would be on the, we would have a copy in the district's administration office as well as get it posted to the district's website, again, for public review. Ms. Lynch is setting up a system so that people can leave feedback if they wish to do so and it will be there for 28 days prior to action at the November 27th voting meeting. May I just also remind everybody that next Wednesday, we are having our second math and literacy open house for parents and students to come to Eagleville. It will be from 6:30 to 8:30, I'm sorry, 6:30 to 7:30. Wow. 6:30 to 7:30. And, you know, there will be some demonstrations and some interactive things- And, you know, there will be some demonstrations and some interactive things, and, you know, we hope to have a good turnout. We had a pretty good turnout last year, we hope this year it'll be even better.
Any other questions for Dr. Gattona? If not, on to policy, we have no items for first reading, because the policy meeting will, I think occurs the following week. There are items on for a second reading, which is policy 314, physical examinations, 318 tardiness, 322 gifts, and 324 personnel files. Are there any questions from the members of the board, and these are items that you would be voting on next week? Any questions on those? If not, we'll move on to others. There's gifts and donations, accept a gift from Methacton Education Foundation under the reran out hunger 5K for $14,560.23, and accept a gift from Kurt and Allison Requine for four iTunes gift cards to be used to encourage student participation in building spirit in Methacton High School, a value of $40. Also, under other, there are trips, to approve the trip for the Methacton High School ski club to Keystone, Colorado, February 14th through the 18th, 2019, there's no cost to the district. And item C, under other, is the interim right-to-know officer. Under the law, we need to ensure that an employee is named for the right-to-know officer process, and we are asking that the board appoint Mr. Che Regina, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations, as a district's interim right-to-know officer. Once we, once we hire for Ms. Lynch's replacement, we'll evaluate the skills and abilities of that particular individual and determine at that time whether or not, you know, the interim position becomes a full-time responsibility for Mr. Regina, or it reverts back to that role, or to some other role within the administration, but it will stay as the contact for a district employee. Are there any questions on any of those items under other? Mr. Ryan?
Two quick questions. For the first gift for the backpack program, will that money be distributed throughout all the schools in the district? I know that in the past, each school has kind of had their own way of running the program with such a large check, again, the second year in a row, it's been such a big success. Is that money funneling down to all the schools?
So, the process will be that the money will come into an account in the district, and then based on the, on a, by request basis, so we're not actually sending the money down to every individual building, we're deciphering it out equally. As you may know, there are some buildings that are well-supplied with other donations, and there are some buildings that are undersupplied, so, you know, we work with the building principals to ensure that when items are needed, that they can, you know, make those requests, and so that's how it's currently operating.
Thank you. And then for the right-to-know, do we need to have a date there, an effective date?
It'll be effective the date of the approval.
Okay.
On the remaining of the agenda, aside from other, there are dates for board members' calendars, as listed, old business, new business, and then I'll, if there aren't any, if there is no old business or new business, I'll turn the microphone over to our Vice President, Ms. Drummond.
Okay, now it's time for Courtesy of the Floor. If anyone has anything to comment on for Courtesy of the Floor, please make your way to the microphone.
Johnny Andrews, Lower Providence. I spoke at the Finance Committee meeting last week relative to some more needed corrections in the enrollment activity that Malone and McBroom have done this year. There were three directors at that meeting, and at this meeting, there's three or four of you who didn't hear my comments, and that was on October 10th. And at that meeting, I gave a copy of my written comments to Dr. Zerby. Did they get forwarded to Malone and McBroom? Oh, okay, okay, very good. I just wanted to summarize that there's a trend in Methacton births that's been going down approximately five students, five births per year, starting in 2009. 2017, the latest year, the births were down to 262. In contrast to that, in their October 2016 report to us on enrollments, M&amp;M had developed a regression formula to predict future births, and their prediction was 17 high in 2016 and 50 high in 2017. They didn't revise that formula, and that formula for 2018 and a number of successive years is predicting about 320 births. So, that, the way they do their projections, if they're off, let's say by 40 per year, the, in roughly 2021, then that results in approximately 35 fictitious students in kindergarten, and the next year, 35 fictitious students in kindergarten, and about 40 fictitious students in grade one, and that continues, so that's a, that's a major era that has been made aware to them, and hopefully they will be overcoming that era. The other thing is that they, one of their inputs to the regression formula is the annual housing sales in the district, and the num, we don't, I don't know how they came up with their numbers, they're quite a bit higher than the very accurate numbers coming out of the Planning Commission on an annual basis. So, that, that can lead to further errors in their, the quality of their predictions for us. The other thing I note is that we have a thousand or so apartments in Lower Providence, and they produce significantly different numbers of kindergarten students from year to year, and the same may be true for their births here. So, I would recommend that that can be overcome by doing annual apartment censuses, one way or another, that are allowed by law, and.
Mr. Andrews, please wrap up.
And also, if Malone and McBroom looks again at their projections, as of October 1, they have the actuals for this year, and I bring this matter to your attention because the quality of the enrollment projections influence the quality of our decisions on facilities requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Courtesy of the Floor?
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I took my time, I got John's memo about the enrollment projections from M&amp;M study, and I was taken back about the errors and M&amp;M's inability to pick up actual numbers from various reports, whether it be housing, or births, or whatever, but if I was a board member, I would pay strict attention to this man's analysis, because he did not predict 6,500 kids in this district back in 2007, when EI associates did it, and we built Skyview, and we borrowed $30, $35 million and built a school that we didn't need. John was here speaking out against that, and he was right on with the numbers and the downturn that the district experienced, rather than the 6,500 kids that justified the building and the debt of Skyview Elementary. So I would pay attention to his numbers, he takes great pride, and he spends a lot of time with these numbers, and he digs through it. He's not a company from Connecticut or New England doing our enrollment study. And you have to remember, too, EI associates did the enrollment study that generated 6,500 kids for this district, and on that superintendent's ethics statement, he derived compensation when he left this district from EI associates, and also from RBC Capital Markets. It's on his ethics report where he got compensation, that superintendent that was involved back then. So you need to pay attention to this guy's analysis, because it's probably pretty accurate, right? I have one question, the two parent contracts, what schools are they going to? You know?
The one was just a one-day trip, but still requires a contract. That was before school started, and we finally got the paperwork back from the parent, and we'll then process it. That was to the tech school. And the other one is going to, I think, the Davidson School, but right now it's just one student with the parent, and they haven't driven him once, they just asked that for an option in case they need to transport the student. They're both special needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Courtesy of the Floor? Okay.
Before you go on, I just want to make a statement about where we're at in terms of, we had some conversations with the board a number of meetings ago with regards to some property matters, and there was some discussion about a plan and a timeline. You know, that information has now been, you know, resynthesized based on your feedback, and I'm in the process of, you know, getting out to the public and to advertise us for a special meeting in November for specific discussion regarding programs and enrollment and services provided in the district, that will also take into consideration, you know, the challenges before us with some of the property matters that we have. So with that said, you know, that should be out this week, and that should lay out, you know, a process for which, you know, we can have a larger discussion, provide some information, and like always, you know, it's important, yes, to make sure that enrollment projections are accurate, so as the board should know, and as I'm telling you, you know, when I get questions from members of the public about, you know, some of the reports that we have that have been requested under the right-to-know process, since we haven't actually presented any of those into the public domain at this point in time, we've taken, I've taken that information and those comments and shared them back with Malone and McBroom in effort to make sure that, you know, we are getting what we really need in terms of the most accurate, based on the experience of a provider that's done this for, you know, hundreds of school districts across the country. So, you know, with that said, you know, it is important, and I appreciate any of the feedback that I get from the public, and, you know, as we move forward with this, with this process, I assume we'll get additional feedback, not only from the board, but from members of the public, and we'll use that as a, as a means to come up to some decisions that, you know, are before us. So, look for that later this week, but that will likely get on everyone's agenda, and of course, we'll share that out through our school messenger and post on our website, and make sure everybody's well-informed with the process. That's all I have in terms of that.
Can I just make a comment to that, when it just popped in my head? I think it would, I guess the right word is behoove, behoove us to, English made. So, I think we need to understand, if we do have a public hearing, and you're going to present something to the.
We're not going to have a hearing. So, we're not having a hearing.
Public.
We're gonna have a special meeting.
A special meeting, when there's public comment.
Yeah, but no action item by the board.
Right, okay. But I think we should have a strategy around how we, you know, an interaction with the community about, you know, what questions coming up, should it be a four-minute, or should it be longer, whatever, should people sign up? So, it could be nothing, it could be something. I think we just need to know what we plan and set the rules upfront, and not sort of decide the rules while we're there. That's.
That's, you know, a good comment. We've had experience with these larger processes before, I think we've learned from that, and I think we can put forward, you know, a process that is organized and gives people the appropriate amount of time to speak and to share information. I think the key here is that, and it should be known, that that special meeting, there's no recommended action for the board, and so that's the clear decisive factor in the whole matter. My goal is not only to allow for public comment like we normally would, but to create an online opportunity for people to share comments after the fact, because the type of information and the amount of information that we plan to share, you know, it isn't necessarily going to be, not everyone's necessarily going to be capable of comprehending that, you know, just through the presentation. So it may take some time to people to look at the information, to further digest it, and to evaluate it, and then to comment or ask further questions, so I think that's the important part is. And I think, you know, with the, the world of the board is really to make the right decisions based on the information, and making sure that that information is accurate, and it's the best information that we have at the moment in time where we're going to make the decision. So, I appreciate those comments, and we'll certainly communicate that process out in advance of the meeting.
Anybody else have anything? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second? Okay, we're adjourned.